I'll do what I need to.
Counselor Moore, do you want to hear us okay?
Is there a reason why we don't have a hundred questions?
You can ask him. Because I don't really think he might be very comfortable.
He's fine.
I'm not sure I heard.
Hey Chad. Chad?
Yeah.
It's very warbled.
Okay.
Okay, hi Ginny and everybody. That is there. Ginny, can you hear me? Can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Well, I'm right in front of it, so. Okay, and so anybody who speaks tonight is going to have to speak out loudly. So that computer there is the microphone. And it will pick you up with soft sounds.
Ken, curious, do we know?
He just joined.
Thank you. There you go. Kristy, is Peter on? Can he get a stool or something? He could adjust his monitor probably.
Everyone is here.
Okay.
Can you call the June first, twenty twenty-two? Your city council meeting to order. Carrie, can you adjust your screen a little bit so that we can see you?
Sure. I'm first going to try and increase the volume of the speaker because I cannot hear you very well.
We'll try and speak loudly. There was a request that we see more than just the top of your head. Okay.
That's the bald spot.
Is there a declaration of any conflict of interest from any of the councilors?
No. Nope.
None here. Approval of minutes, we have a regular meeting from May fourth. Your motion to approve.
I move we approve the minute of the city council for May fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion passed. We have a set of minutes from the budget committee from Thursday, May fifth. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we.
Brent, you just.
We went back to mute.
You went back to mute. Could, can you repeat your motion?
Yeah, sorry about that. I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the budget committee of May fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion, Carrie.
Pardon me?
Sorry, Carrie?
I voted for the minutes.
Yeah, and the motion carried.
It's Carrie, C-A-R-R-I.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can. I can't hear hardly a word, so I'm going to have my hand to my ears so I can try and hear whatever.
All right, we moved you a little closer. Next in the packet is the planning commission report. Are there any comments from the council?
Was Commissioner Taggart voted vice president because they weren't at the meeting?
I think so.
That was her reward for not being there, okay.
Okay, moving along. Next is my report, and I sent it to the councilors this afternoon. What I did this morning was. Synthetized, synthesized what I heard at the work session yesterday. And council, I'm looking for. I'm looking for the urgency of the situation with regard to the fire station. That's what I'm perplexed about. Because I feel like the longer it's put off, the more it costs. And that could be a wrong assumption. So I, I wrote this with some urgency. Because if we were to go for a November ballot, we need to decide that by mid-August. That means having town halls and doing a survey in the next two and a half months. Also synthesizing all the information from those. And then making a decision whether to move forward in November. Maybe that's too fast. But. The, the other part that we need to consider with what I read is that we have two budgets. We have budget A and budget B, and we're going to pass one of those tonight, I hope. One of them includes funding for a fire station. It was done in case the bond failed, which it did. And we decided to go forward in the next fiscal year, which would be November or probably next May. And maybe that will answer the question that I just posed. I'm a little unsure about that, but. The timeline tasks between now and mid-August, and I just wrote mid-August because of what I just explained about the November ballot potentially. The first task is Fire Chief Como to provide a report to the city council at the July city council meeting. Possible, possible interim solutions focused on improving firefighter safety. Next is to hold one or two town hall presentations for the public to provide input regarding the price voters are willing to pay for new fire station. Or fire police station. Possible locations indicating preferred second and third choices. Urgency of building a new fire station. The next bullet point or action item I have is a town hall location. It's in association with the, the one I just spoke about. Could be used the existing fire station or possibly Mr. Moore would allow the use of the former elementary school. With assumed participation option. Also borrowing the city of Scapoose's instant feedback hardware and purchasing a limited subscription for its use. And that we were told by Mr. Watts last night is about a thousand dollars. Hire a neutral facilitator to lead the town halls. I just took a guess on three to five thousand dollars. Not sure about that. Invite expert speakers to be present, to present at the town hall, including an emergency preparedness expert. An architect of police and fire stations. A fire safety expert and possibly a geologist. The next is to develop and complete a citywide survey, phone, computer, and/or paper regarding the building of a new fire police station. Hire an outside firm to design a survey for the city. Again, I put three to five thousand dollars. Have an ad hoc group assist in developing the questions. One of the things from that survey that we would want to know are the reasons for the no vote. And some things were garnered last night. The cost, location, mistrust of city officials and elected officials. Communication, social media, tsunami fatigue, history of water treatment plant, cost increase. Highlands Lane plan too complex. Building design, butterfly habitat, not located downtown. Possible contamination of Neacoxa Creek or groundwater, et cetera. Next one, develop education regarding the relationship between. The Gerhart Road Fire Protection District and the city of Gerhart's Volunteer Fire Department. Number of properties, population served, types of calls made, budget impacts. The next discussion vote, what I was talking about, at July or August council meeting regarding the urban growth boundary. Should we move forward? Discussion of the agreement, renegotiation of the agreement. That is due to expire mid-August. And finally, request University of Portland to review our buildable lands inventory and provide updated date. Updated data and census information for that effort. Which may be something we want to do in the, maybe not the near future, maybe not the next three months, but something we may want to do to. Get a handle on our buildable land inventory. And if we need to have more discussion on this, we can. Put it on the agenda. Next month as new business and have a lengthy discussion. But if this sounds like something we should do tonight and get a consensus to move forward urgently. That is what I would like to back from the council.
Madam Mayor, I think it's a workable plan. I think it's pretty comprehensive. It's what we need to do to move forward. So I would hope we could reach consensus on adopting that as a, an action plan.
The action plan includes a couple of town hall meetings. And what else?
Chief Como to provide a report to city council in July. Town halls using Scapoose's instant feedback hardware, neutral facilitator. Speakers of experts with regard to fire, police, emergency preparedness. Develop and complete a survey. Develop education with regard to the GRFPD and City of Gerhart Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, I am, I agree with Brent. I, I believe we can move forward. In developing a town hall meeting and. Using the scappoos if we can. Voting situation, I think we could have a town hall for people that want to wear masks. And desired other people to wear masks. And we can have a town hall meeting for people who feel that wearing a mask is not what they want to endure anymore. So. But those are negotiable items as far as a town hall is concerned. But the idea that we need to keep moving forward. With community input. Is something that I'm on board with and would. Back it if I was in the area right now, but since I'm not, I will be in two weeks and will be happy to commit. A lot of time to.
Carrie, are you also interested in a survey?
I believe the survey would be handled by the voting block situation. We could develop enough questions if people spent an hour or an hour and a half. It's a yes or no. Kind of survey and it's a. We can do it quickly if we think about the questions and phrase them. So a person has an actual choice, a yes or a no. And I think that would be as good as a survey because a survey depending on, I mean, we don't have to go to the expense of hiring a company to. Worded such that one way or the other is going to look better to a person. We can just do that ourselves, I believe, with a community group.
Yeah. My concern, Carrie, is that not everyone who's a voter would be attending the town, the town halls.
Well, everyone who's a voter is never going to attend a town hall or any other thing with. I'm not asking for people to come in with their voter registration card, but. Maybe that's a requirement we are going to have to ask or if. We want to get. Very sensitive about who's going to answer the questions and if we're going to listen to them. I think the voters of Gerhart will step up and deliver. Their voice in this situation and allow us to move forward. And we'll know. Really from. If we have these two different kinds of survey, because I believe there are people that. Want to wear masks and be protective, and there are people that don't. And their choice is their choice, and I think. By giving them those two options, we can get a fair. A fair consensus of what the voters will do. And what, we just have to be, you know, point specific as far as, are you willing to spend this much money? And are you willing to build here or are you willing to build there? And. But I'm on board with that. I think we should continue, Paulina, even though. What we offered the. Citizens was rejected. I believe it was a good choice. It was sound reasoning. It was scientific reasoning and now we have to go with. More of an emotional basis and allow people to. Express their emotions the way they're, they want to.
Thank you, Carrie. Austin or Rita?
Well, I really like the idea of the instant voting. I really like that. And I think when, if and when the questions are drafted for that. On, not online, but that instant survey. I think some of the questions not only should be drafted by the city and maybe the councilors. But I think some of the questions should be drafted by those who voted against the fire station so that we're not skewed. You know, one way or the other, so I would like to see some of the, a few citizens beyond that question. Making committee.
I, yeah, I did have an ad hoc focus group to.
Oh, good.
To deal with the survey.
Yeah.
But.
Because sometimes the way questions are asked, they're skewed.
Right. I have a great article on twelve things surveyed.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great point.
Thank you.
I, I, I fully support, fully forward this one. The way it is. The, the facilitator I'm open to, I feel like if we have somebody kind of leading that meeting, that's kind of. A neutral voice, it might, it might bring about a different atmosphere. So I think we should at least explore that option if it's available to us. We have the funding to do it. I don't know what those people have to do costs of. We can decide that when we get like some couple, a few people or bids on something like that, so.
So what I'm hearing and what I would like to propose to move forward is to have Chief Como do a report. And we asked him about that last night. For the July meeting. Yeah, and to go forward with the town hall presentations. Using the instant feedback and put it, put together an ad hoc group to help with the questions that we would ask. We probably want to do at least a couple. We'll need a place to have it. If we can work in the mask, no mask, or social distancing, that's great and great advertising to get people there. Probably lower priority is maybe the development of education. We may be able to hold off on that, but if we can do that with regard to the. Gerhart Road Fire Protection District, that piece, it's probably a little bit lesser priority. We will need to put on the, at least the August city council. A discussion with regard to the urban growth boundary. Moving forward or, or letting that rest and. Peter, if you could just report to us. Or maybe just weigh in on requesting University of Portland to look at our buildable lands inventory.
So it's Portland State University that, that makes those calculations. And they do it on a. They correct their population estimates on a three-year cycle. I'm not sure what cycle we're in right now. I know that Columbia County is in twenty twenty-three is when they'll be looking at this. 2023 is when they'll be looking at this. I had a meeting on these issues with Senator Armitage, who's currently the senator for Clotsop County and some other counties. And she's actually going to have a staffer kind of assigned to this issue and that person's going to be starting June 15th. The numbers that she gave me were that we have a vacancy rate of less than 1%. And I don't, I don't know how recent that number is. But I think there's a real urgency around lack of housing and particularly lack of workforce housing as far as teachers and nurses and folks in the Coast Guard and others. So I think that a lot of people are starting to look at this issue and maybe that would allow us to bump up the date where they would look at what we have and their past projections. I think I mentioned in a prior meeting that our population growth was four times what they had predicted over the period. And there were other communities that were as high as eight times what they had predicted. So nobody has a crystal ball, but the numbers were off dramatically. So I, you know, I don't know the exact timeline. We can ask them to do that. And but if we have a state senator, you know, also asking them, that probably helps us get some action from Portland State.
So could we just ask you to kind of keep your ear to the ground on that and report back?
Yeah, apparently this staffer is starting, I think Senator Armitage told me, June 15th. So and, and she asked me what kind of availability I had and I let her know that, you know, I would certainly make time and and kind of walk her through the data because there's so much data and it's, it's you know, it can be difficult to wrap your arms around. But yeah, I think that the good news is that the situation is so dire on the northern Oregon coast that that maybe there's some further action that people will take as far as rezones and expansions. So we'll see. But I will, I will keep you updated and I, I'm almost certain I'll have an update by our July meeting.
Okay, great. I have all that I hope to get out of that report. So I'll go to councillors' reports. Carrie Smith?
I have one item to report. I went to the countywide housing task force meeting at the county fairgrounds. I am very disappointed with the county making it mask-free and seating people within three or four feet of each other. I did not sit with the group. I stayed outside, but they talked about transitional housing for the homeless and the miniature houses, and they figure it'll cost between $10,000 and $15,000 per unit with a Clotsop Community Association, CCA. I'm not actually sure if that's the right acronym, but they would be the people that oversaw the transitional housing. And then we had a report from Cannon Beach's workforce housing. Oh, damn. I can't remember his name right now. I didn't write it down. I didn't bring my notes. But they are in dire needs, just like Seaside for workforce housing. So is Astoria. And they, they want to make a ad hoc committee of the towns and interested investors and explore areas that they might be able to exploit and lands that maybe the county holds that can be used for workforce housing and maybe transitional housing. But that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Carrie. Brent?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the last week or so has been frankly kind of rough. Debriefing with people in the community, our firefighters on the loss of the measure. I would say that it's safe to say morale for a lot of the firefighters is pretty low. I know mine is. We talked about doing a capital campaign for grants for the fire police station. You know, some in the community have said that the council doesn't have any experience with grant writing and funding. That is not the case. I've been doing grants on both sides of the table, working with nonprofit organizations, primarily Habitat for Humanity, but many other nonprofits. I've been in banking for 35 years. Much of that has been on the selection approval team for the bank corporate side and the bank foundation side. I work on community approval teams with United Way and the Department of Justice. So I know a little bit about grants. One of the prerequisites for having a grant process in place is to have a project. And right now we don't have a project. There's no case study to present to a funder. We don't have a site. We don't have site control. Right now, we don't have demonstrated community support. So it's kind of hard to proceed on the grant side at the moment until we get farther down the road. And I think I'll cut off right there.
Thank you, Brent. Austin?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Rita. You do have experience doing grants, though, I believe.
Well, yes. Yes, I do.
I do as well.
Okay. I think I did a few being the grants in the past, too.
My whole career's been around grants.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on, Chief of Police. We don't have a written report. Any comments from council on the chief police's report?
I did not understand the question.
Any comments on the chief of police's report?
No.
Nope.
Six traffic accidents. And that's a nay. Just one month. We have, and is Chief Bowman on the call? Does he have an oral report?
No, I don't believe he does.
Okay. And Chief Como, we have your incident report. Do you have an oral report?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Glad you guys were able to get the, a monthly report. The state was kind of cutting it to the wire a little bit with that one. As I've told you many times, it takes 24 hours and sometimes longer. After all that's inputted before we can pull the report. And being how today's the first, we have calls yesterday, it's kind of hard to get those turned around. So glad you guys got those. With that, kind of a shorter report for you guys tonight, just for that, a report from last month. We ended last month on call 267 for the year. That makes 47 calls for the month. May of 2021, which was a record year, we ended on call 250. So to date, we're 17 calls ahead of last year's record year. The breakdown for last month's 47 calls, 21 of those was inside city limits. 18 was in our rural fire protection district. We sent out aid eight times. Five of them was to Seaside. One of those to Seaside was for structure fire. Four of them was for coverage and high call volume when they had low staffing and couldn't handle the calls because they are the back-to-backs and dealing with other ones. We sent aid to Warranton once for a structure fire. Aid to LC Vine Maple once for a structure fire and Cannon Beach once for a structure fire. So there were one, two, three, four structure fires last month that we went to. We received aid once. I called Seaside to come in for an automatic, for mutually, when I call it to mutually. Once there was a motor vehicle accident, we had a car off of the highway right by the weigh station. It was in the middle of the workday and middle workday calls with staffing is a little bit tougher. And I knew what kind of where things were at and what was going. So I called Seaside to come assist us with that. Once myself and another couple firefighters got on scene, I realized that we didn't need them. So what I had them do is I had Seaside staged at our station to make sure our community was covered. And we had coverage for that. So if you did see them in town that day, that was the reason why I diverted them here because we didn't need them. For community events for last month, I wanted a quick note on the firefighters' ball that did not happen. It didn't happen because in December of 2021 and January of this year, which is the time we have to start reserving and scheduling everything for the ball. Sorry about that. We didn't know what the status of COVID and everything was going to be quite yet. And so we were not able to schedule everything and pre-plan for it. So we had to cancel it again for the same reasons, but we are planning and prepping for it for next year. So dispatch, radio communications. The FCC licensing, I believe, is put through and that was completed. The equipment is waiting for installs. We're waiting for day wireless to come install that. And then hopefully our radio communications will be a little bit better. Dispatch centers did unmerge, so Astoria is back up at Astoria and Seaside at Astoria. We are still moving forward with getting countywide one, one county tone-out channel. So that way the entire county can hear what's going on and both centers can tone us out. And they don't play the telephone game and we have to have resources across North County and South County lines. You guys mentioned grants. We do still have two of them out that are pending. The fire department has been very successful in grant, successful awards in the past. We've got many of them. Our SCDA's that we currently have, we just got from a grant 2019 as when we were awarded that one, I believe, as well as other ones for apparatus and such. So we have two out that are still pending. No news is good news for grants. One of them is replace our water tender, which is 27 years old. And then a safer grant for a person to come there and help with recruit and retention. A regional grant with us in Cannon Beach is still out and pending. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is burning stuff. I know it's getting a little bit better weather. People are starting to burn and their houses debris and what have you. If you go to our website, gearheartfire.com, click on burning, you can find all the burning regulations. Pamphlets, any file for a burn permit all online right there. And that concludes my report unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
Justin, let's see. So finish the budget for our budget meeting. Now it goes to upper adoption tonight with some potential changes on the revenue expenditures, budget versus actual. So noteworthy in revenues. We had deposits for a port payments to Fund 45, the state revenue sharing, and Fund 60, the state streets. Those are just a regular payment that we received, but I think they were a little higher than normal as our numbers start increasing with the population counts. And Fund 75, hazardous mitigation grant. Christie is in charge of that grant and we had some expenditures and she had submitted all that stuff, I think, around December. And we had gotten the money for that. So that's in Fund 75. In expenditures, in order to more accurately account for city water usage, we have added two new accounts for water consumption. So 10, 1380 in fire and 10, 1880 in parks. There is now a line that says water and the water meter is tracked just like a regular property. And we get an invoice for that and then the city reimburses the water fund. Trying to make sure that we keep that revenue accurate and that we are accounting for city water usage as well. The playground equipment has been received by the city, which did require the final payment. And that came out of account 10, 1881, the parks' capital outlay equipment. So we made our final payment there. Half of that was paid pretty much by Berkeley fundraising efforts. So she paid half and then this is the final balance of that. Hopefully that park will get up and running here soon. We also continue to work towards backflow compliance. We've sent out first and second notices for those properties that were impacted. And within the next two weeks, we'll send out a final notice that will let those properties know that we will have to shut off water if they don't have a current backflow test on file. So people have been very gracious and let's try and get those all back into compliance. So I appreciate not only our backflow testers, but our residents that have been keeping those down for us.
What expertise does it take to do a backflow test?
I think you have to be certified if it's a week-long class that you have to take and you get a certification.
Like a plumber or a gardener?
A plumber and a gardener can do it if they have a certain level. You know, a certain level. They can't be an apprentice, so they can do it too. But you can also not be a plumber and just be a backflow tester. And prices range, so people really should call a couple of people before they just make an assumption on a company. Because there's a very large range of charges that people are getting.
And that's an annual?
Annual. Thank you. Any questions for Justine from the council?
I had one. I noticed that we spent 1,700 bucks on mutt mitts. Do we get, we're reimbursed from the Gearheart Homeowners Association for those because they just did an article in their newsletter saying that they provided those?
No, usually they write us a check to cover part of those expenses. And then at the same time, I believe they also write a check for the fire department to provide for the hot dogs. So they are participants in it, but they don't take care of the entire amount.
Okay, so we don't send them an invoice. They just send us a check when they have funds available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Watts, do you have the report?
Yeah, I'm really having trouble hearing you. I can hear Brent and Carrie really clearly, but as far as the what's being said in the room, it's pretty faint. I think I've already discussed kind of the housing and, and you know, steps that are being taken there. I think that that is going to be, as I look at kind of the legal issues that are going to be impacting I think that that is going to be, as I look at kind of the legal issues that are going to be impacting the city, that, that is an issue that I'm, I'm very concerned about because I, I know how long it takes for most land use decisions to be made. The last UGB expansion I did, and we, we don't really have an expansion area, we have the swap area, but that's about it. Took five years from when we initially did the planning work for it due to the end. So I think that for Clapton County, it's probably going to involve rezones. It's probably going to involve some of those other things. I was contacted by some folks that are trying to do workforce housing in Astoria that they received funds from the Meyer Memorial Trust. And they've been able to find other funds and, and they're having difficulty finding dirt. So in that, that's apartments. I mean, that's what they're looking to do is like apartments for nurses, for Coast Guard people, for, you know, maybe first responders, just kind of the people that are needed to keep a community safe from a healthcare perspective and, and those other aspects. And, and you know, my response to them is I wasn't aware of any land available because, and because we're on septic. It would be really difficult for us to do multifamily housing of any, you know, of any, at any large scale. But I hope that people in the community will be thinking about these issues. And if you're aware of land that may be available, that's particularly if it's inside the UGB, that's unused or underutilized, if you could just get that information to Chad so he can get it to me and so I can kind of pass it along. It's really, I really think it's going to take kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach to these issues. So I'm, I'm not billing the city for any of the time I'm spending on this because it's, it's not a per se, a city issue. I think it's more just a overarching issue. So don't, don't feel bad about shooting emails to, to Chad and into me and so that we can kind of get that, get that along. And then as far as our land swap, you know, I know this has been very criticized by some people. I am, when I'm looking at exactions, which is what we were doing in that we wanted to park and we wanted land for a fire station. There are two tests that we are both from the United States Supreme Court. One called the Nolan Test, which is that there has to be a nexus between what we're asking for and what somebody's getting. And the other one is what's called, this, the case is Dolan v. the City of Tigerd. It is Tigerd, Oregon, and they went all the way to Supreme Court. And that's the exaction needs to be roughly proportionate to the benefit that is received by the developer. And so if, if we're, there are limits to what, what we can legally expect to get from any developer. And you know, there were proposals saying like, why isn't the city at seventy-five percent of the lots? And it's like, well, if the developer ends up with less lots than they were entitled to under the county zoning plus the density bonus that they purchased, A, why would they do that deal? But B, that deal would be illegal because there's no way that we can say that what we're taking equals the benefit that anyone's receiving. So I don't know what's going to happen with the land swap. I can circle back around with those folks and have those conversations. I think my personal opinion is that we critically need lots right now in Clapton County. And I think that's borne out by the by the, the data that's out there as well as everybody's lived experiences. I think that, you know, what the developer is willing to do or what we could reasonably expect, we'll find out. As far as what, whether people in Gearheart want a park, which is what I had believed. Yeah, I think they, they still do is what our data shows. Whether, and it seems like they would want that park to be butterfly-centric. So there's some special vegetation that's attracting the butterflies that, that could be something that could be done. As far as whether to make the other parcel more of a flex use so that it could be used for just our equipment for public works or whatever in the interim. And tell people to start, maybe decide that they want to fund something there, or maybe they never will. But I think we probably benefit from having a little more flexibility in that, so I can have that conversation as well. One of the reasons that I had specified firehouses is that we were getting threatened with a lawsuit by a different homeowners association. And I believe that if we, I believe if they knew that their, the location that that homeowners association didn't want wouldn't happen, and this other one, which is a higher elevation would, that that would eliminate or mitigate opposition. And I guess I'm just a super optimistic person because that sure didn't seem to work. But ultimately, those, the property owners have been reasonable to work with in the past, and, and I hope they would be going forward. So with your permission, I'll have that conversation with them just to see if they're still interested in pursuing this versus going with the county zoning. And if, if they are kind of what the terms would be, and then I can share that at our July meeting. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Chad?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm, I'm going to speak up a little bit more. I'm getting some messages from some people that say it's still hard to hear because we're using that microphone there. I'll keep my update short. You've got my update page here in the packets, but three things that I wanted to highlight are positive things. We've got the Mechanical watershed council. We received a grant through the Mechanical watershed council for the Ridge Path decolonial project. So we have our first invasive species removal work party on June fifteenth at nine AM. The details are on the blog. We also have, will have soon, once we figure a few things out, a volunteer effort to help us with the construction of the children's park with the play equipment. And so pay attention to the blog for that coming up. Fourth of July parade, eleven AM on the fourth. People are going to be able to line up between seventh and tenth on Marion at about ten thirty. All powered vehicles, with the exception of the fire truck, are prohibited. And the fire station will of course be doing their hot dogs and t-shirts after. And then also note, with some help of some people such as Melissa Eddy, it looks like the city is going to hold the street dance, the city and them, Friday, July first at seven PM. So save that date. You'll also see some things on the blog about, or the blog about that. That's all that I have to report for right now. I was there some questions.
Thank you, Chad. Any comments on correspondence? We have an elk sighting. We have one on groundwater discussions from Mr. Zimmerman. We have one from Mr. Maury on records request. Another one from Mr. Maury. I think that's it. Visitors, we have one person from, or two people from recology. We're going to have first, and then just to let you ladies know, Beth, you would be after, after recology speaks, then I would ask you first and Jeannie Mark, second. You both emailed about wanting to speak. And then we'll go on to the people who are here in the audience who signed up. And then we'll capture anybody who emailed or has their hands up on Zoom. So we have Chris Carey and Scott Meathen from recology to talk to us about their rates. And council, we're going to ask for an action, a motion when he's finished.
All right, thank you. I'm going to kind of yell because I know it's hard to hear, so I'll get closer to that. But I won't turn and look at you because you won't hear me if I do that. That's it. All right, so Madam Mayor, councilors, thank you for inviting Scott and I. Scott's in the back hiding. We'll make him pop out if we need to. My name's Chris Carey. I'm the regional manager for recology. You normally would see Dave Larmouth, who does our studies for us, is on our team. He's usually in front of you guys when we have rate increase asks or just impacts. He is in a different city tonight doing the same thing. So I just want to give you guys an operational update, things that are going on, and then go into the rate review or rate requests for, for our ask. So with new management, I'm new, I'm with recology since December twenty-ninth. But I've been in the industry for fifteen years. Recology is new to me. It's an awesome company. We have companies in Portland, we run the metro, it's central and south transfer stations. We have three compost facilities in the state that take food waste. We do not own a landfill. We operate transfer stations and hauling companies all through the North Coast. So from Astoria down to Rockaway, and then we have McMinnville all around wine country. It's not a bad place to work. The coast or wine country, I get to choose. So we've had some challenges with hiring. I will say right now, we're one driver short. When I started, we were four, and we're going into the busy season. So all the challenges that you've heard about getting employees, it's real. Customer service is the same thing. We were down four, we're one short of being fully staffed. We actually hired a second down here at the coast, which is good because we tend to centralize the calls. But I wanted to make sure we have representation down here. We're going to be opening the doors in Warrington for pay here soon, we hope. And it might be a window where you can come in and pay, and then eventually the office may be open, and we're thinking September. So more to come on that because we have a lot of people that want to come pay us, which we like, but we want to be able to accommodate them. Supply chain issues have been an issue, parts, just waiting for them, equipment, containers, carts, new trucks, new trucks, we ordered one, Scott, and we ordered one a year and a half ago and it still hasn't been delivered. So it's, it's really tough to get equipment, but we're waiting through it. We're getting through it. So I'm going to go into the rate end of it. You guys received packets from Dave, I think in April. It gives you a breakdown of our total costs, and then it gives you the gear percentage of those. And then that's how we built the rate. We look at what we said we would do last year, our actual costs. And then we project what we think they're going to be for the following rate year, then go back to like first of this year. So you can imagine there's fuel, there's wages, there's some increases. We have an operating ratio that we have contractually through in our franchise agreement that says we, between eighty-eight and ninety-two percent, that means we can earn eight to twelve percent margin, okay? And that's based on our projected expenses. We also have in this franchise agreement with you that says we can come in for a CPI increase. And it's capped at four percent. That's good news for the rate pairs because CPI is eight percent to eighty-point-five right now. So we, we're not asking for that. We're also below the margin that's stipulated in the franchise, the range, so we're trying to peg it back in the center at ten. And so that's why we're coming in for a four percent increase as well. Not the eight that CPI would allow us, but the four that's allowed in the franchise agreement. What does that mean for you at rates? I'm going to give you two rates that we think are most common. Thirty-two gallon cart weekly goes up eighty-seven cents. So eight, or four percent sounds like a lot, but it's eighty-seven cents. So it feels more manageable. And then if you have a ninety gallon cart weekly, it goes up at dollar forty-five. And those are effective July first. You guys would approve those tonight. They go into effect July first. We also have a rate adjustment to what we call our debris boxes, the big ones. Like if you walk out the store and look to your right, you'll see a big twenty-yard drop box. Those rates are going up. Those are impacted primarily by increases at the transfer station. And then the processor that handles our yard debris trails end is also looking for a rate increase. We pass both those through into the rate, and that's included in this four percent. So wages, fuel, parts, and disposal increases are all in here. We did not come in front of you for a price increase last year. We did in twenty twenty for two-point-nine percent, just to put things in perspective. We're not here every year if we don't have to. Questions?
That's eighty-seven cents. I assume that's a month.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, all of our charges are monthly, and I think most people pay two months at times, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the rate increase being requested by recology?
I move that we accept the rate increase as put forward by recology and Mr. Carey.
There is second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have our visitors section. The rest of our visitor section, visitors, please give your full name and your address. And we have five minutes. Chad, are you able to time those?
If it all works well, yes ma'am.
Okay, Beth, you have the floor.
Beth, you're muted.
You're muted.
Okay, am I there? All right, Beth Cameron, twenty-nine oh six Pine Court. Last night, and then again just now, I heard a lot of blame as to why the bond failed. Mr. Warren last night said he thought it was because Gearheart taxpayers are uneducated. Mr. Sweet thinks it was due to tsunami fatigue, whatever the hell that is. In actuality, the bond failed because you guys failed to listen to and include Gearheart's taxpayers. Instead, you thought you knew best, and all you needed to do was tell us what to think, and we would fall in line. Instead, people started doing their own research and began asking questions that you couldn't or wouldn't answer. We lost confidence in your words and your actions. Tonight, we've heard a lot about town hall meetings, and I think that's a great idea. But I want to make sure you understand that there's, I think Mr. Warren told me, plus or minus fifty percent of us who are not full-time, we don't get to vote in Gearheart, yet you get our money. We deserve to be able to vote. So Mr. Carey Smith, Mr. Smith, if we show up to vote on that voting machine, we should be allowed to vote because it affects our bottom line too. I think that is a good idea because it's anonymous and it's quick. But let's address the anonymity part, since that was another thing Mr. Warren brought up last night. He believed that those remaining, wanting to remain anonymous shouldn't be allowed to participate. But it's obvious that many people chose to keep silent on their position regarding the bond. Probably that was afraid, because they were afraid of reprisals. Like, I don't know, the parking ticket that Joy Sigler got for illegally parking in the same spot she has parked in for the past thirty-two years. Further, she was threatened that her customers were now at risk for getting parking tickets too, all because she had a sign on her truck that you guys didn't like. As to surveys, y'all seem to think that surveys- As to surveys, y'all seem to think that surveys are easy to write, and they are not. I took a master's class in writing surveys. It's fine, yes-no questions and multiple choice questions. But people have to have the ability to make comments. There has to be a place for a comment on every single question. The one you sent out before, I read through all of those. That was the most ridiculous, horrific survey I'd ever seen. That would have gotten me an F in my college class. There are lots of, there are lots of different websites that can help you generate, send, compile, and analyze results. Survey Monkey is one of them, but there are lots. That being said, though, I do appreciate your realization that the community needs to be involved. Had we been a part of the discussion making, the decision making, excuse me, all along, perhaps a new station would have already been built and at a much lower cost than it's gonna be. The Guidelines for Citizens' Involvement on Pages 6 and 7 of the City's Comprehensive Plan states Gerhart's taxpayers will be involved in city decisions. Perhaps it's time to form a Citizens Advisory Committee, call it that, that is representative of all sides of the issue, not just cherry picked people that only support one side of the argument, whether it's for or against. It has to be everybody is included. I sincerely hope your words of last night, and again today, noting the need to include all of Gerhart in the fire station conversation were honest and heartfelt. I say this because prior to the defeat of the bond, none of you council members demonstrated the understanding or desire to include any Gerhart taxpayer not agreeing with your position. Rather, it's been about your vanity, hubris, and desire to be the smartest in the room. At present, Gerhart is fractured, and you are responsible. Each and every one of you on the council should be ashamed of yourselves for excluding Gerhart taxpayers in this endeavor. You created a climate of neighbor against neighbor, all because you refused to include the community at large in your good old boys club for fear of having to compromise and not getting your way. Going forward, I'm asking, demanding really, that each of you ask yourself if you can work with those you have maligned in a respectful and constructive manner to finally get a new station built. If you can't, you must resign your position on the council. As was stated at last night's meeting, the people have spoken. Thank you. I'm all done.
I'm sorry, you don't have the floor. I'm going to move on to Jeannie Mark. Thank you, Beth.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. With all due respect to the sense of urgency, I would like to touch on a few points. But before I do, I would like to thank Mayors Smith, Whitup, Brown, and Cochrane, all members of the City Council and Planning Commission. Over the past 16 years, our previous city administrator, Dennis McNally, our current city administrator, Chad Sweet, former fire chief, Bill Eddy, current fire chief, Josh Como, all city staff, and all volunteers for the tremendous amount of work and effort that has been done and will continue to be done in the name of trying to get a new fire station built for Gerhart. Thank you for everything you have done. Here we are. We carry on. Gerhart's future regarding a new fire station is in all of our hands. With regard to that future, I ask the council to continue pursuing the urban growth boundary at Highlands Lane. None of us knows how things will play out for a new fire station. But as has been evidenced in these last 16 years, it is a process, a drawn out one. Getting a new fire station will not be flipping a switch. Due diligence must be done, qualified and appropriate experts called in to present factual and science-based information. Analyses will need to be done. There will be further input from the community. All the various things that will need to be put in place to get us to groundbreaking. And all of these things take time. That said, continuing to move forward with the UGB helps safeguard a future for Gerhart that we may not be able to see at this time. Whether a new fire station gets built at Highlands Lane area in three years or in 40 years, securing that parcel gives future Gerhartians options. Let's keep looking ahead and stay on that course. The Cascadia Subduction Zone, 80 miles out at sea, is not going away. It quietly sits there until it doesn't. Secondly, I listened in to the work session last night. At one point, discussion was had regarding doing things needed at the current station to help safeguard the safety and health of all of our firefighting first responder personnel. Let's get on that ASAP. Whether it's addressing the decontamination issue, exhaust issue, a portable shower trailer, perhaps installing another toilet and not one in a plywood closet in their turnout area as they previously had, whatever it is they need right now to take care of them and protect them. Workplace protections, we would expect anywhere we work, especially for them given their exposure to carcinogens. As I said, and all of you know already, a new facility will not be happening anytime soon. Let's responsibly take care of this matter in the meantime. This should be an immediate priority. I am happy to help search out grants if those might be available for these purposes. And one last thing, I've lived in Gerhart for 26 years full-time. And I'm sorry, I don't agree with Beth's comments of a moment ago. There is tremendous, there was tremendous input given. The city did not leave one stone unturned in their process. The Fire Station Committee met in September 2015, concluded in 2018 with recommendations. And everybody in the community had opportunity to listen in on that. So, I'm sorry that that's the case for Beth. And we are all paying taxes as people prior to us paid taxes so that we could enjoy the benefit of those. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jeannie. And next on the list is Bob Moore.
Yes, my name is Robert Moore. I live at 271 D Street, Gerhart. I'm going to talk briefly about six subjects. One...
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Maybe over here. Hit a little louder, please.
Okay, let's start this over. Robert Moore, 271 D Street, Gerhart Organ. I'm going to talk briefly about six subjects. One, the 531-22 Council Working Sessions. Two, the UGB Land Swap. Three, how the fire department operates using the existing fire station. Four, pending information requests. Five, a recall election effort targeted to registered voters. And six, a vote of no confidence effort targeted to non-resident property owners. Regarding the item number one, the 531-22 Council Working Session, there were two items on the agenda. One, the UGB Land Swap, which I referred to as the $10 million giveaway, was ignored. The entire hour was spent on the failed Fire Station Bond effort. For those of us in attendance, me specifically, it was a waste of our time. Number two, the UGB Land Swap. This effort is doomed for failure. Strong UGB challenges are likely. The opportunity to exit this agreement exists. This transaction will not have you Luba Affirmable by August 23rd, and excuse me, I gave you a typo, 2022. When the city can't exit, elect not to extend the agreement. Number three, how the fire department operates using the existing fires station. For six years, this council and staff had tried to get a fire bond approved. Yes voters probably thought that the recently failed effort, asking for $14.5 million, included well-thought-out plans for how to operate for three years at the existing location while a new station was built. Based on yesterday's comments by the council and staff, we have another leadership failure. There is no plan. Number four, pending information requests. We have made, and we as many have made, past information requests. City responses have been invasive. Now that the Fire Station Bond has been soundly defeated, it is time for the city to provide fully supported financial information regarding the multi-year Fire Station effort and the UGB Land Swap. Council has been retained, I have retained council, and directed council to file appropriate actions with the court if compliance is lacking. Number five, the recall election effort registered voter focused. June and July will be a great time to start a recall effort. This should be a fun two months providing information to voters. Let's expect some interesting 4th of July conversations with neighbors and friends. Number six, a vote of no confidence effort targeted to non-resident property owners. Concurrent with a recall election effort, there will be a vote for no confidence effort targeting the non-resident property owners. Thank you for your time.
To Patricia Roberts.
Patricia Roberts, 366 North Ocean Avenue. I'm going to have a bit of lightness. I'm here to talk about the turnout at this last election. I got a little curious, and I read a couple of posts. And it turns out that we had a 10-year high in the turnout. This is a midterm, non-presidential election. Usually 40% of the people vote. It's just, you know, nobody cares. In a presidential election, you have 85% in this precinct. When it's not presidential, but there's something interesting on, it gets higher. We have 300 more voters than were expected. At least a 50% turnout, so you ought to be happy about that. And you got an airfall. Let's hope that when you do your surveys and your questions and your town halls, that you're particularly careful that you're listening to what people are asking and that you answer their questions. Because you didn't do it this last time. And I'm sorry, you just didn't. But the voters were interested enough to let you know loud and clear what they think. Thank you.
Jack Zimmerman.
I've got some bad knees, so I'm going to stand here with my wife.
Okay, you got time, Jack. You have problems over here. Go ahead when you're ready, sir. Nice enough, please.
I listened very intently to the discussion last night at your work session. And then I listened very carefully tonight with your comments. And what I heard is that we need experts to come in. We need more education. That implies that the Gerhart people that voted don't have the capability of critical thinking. And I assure you, based on the turnout and the vote, they thought long and hard, and they do have the skill. And they will march out their vote again if necessary. I heard the concept tsunami fatigue, as if the voters have a syndrome of some kind. And if the city can cure our syndrome of fatigue, then we'll vote for you. I heard we need more surveys. And we participated in your surveys, every one of them. And we saw those surveys, how biased they were. And I didn't read it, you mentioned the issue of being fair in the surveys. We don't need any more surveys. We need an admission from you folks. On May 17th, your six years of effort failed. And it failed resoundly. You failed as an individual counselor, and you failed as a collective body. On May 17th, the concept of resiliency together failed. So, I ask, as you go forward, that you burn in your brain that you failed. Wasn't a Gerhart voter. We did the right thing for Gerhart. It's taken six years to tumultuous debate, fracturing of the city. And most of you sitting here tonight participated in that. You funded it, you approved it, and you split the city. And you made the mess. And as leaders, you need to fix it, and you need to fix it quick. And you need to fix it not just for your base, like Jeannie, Mark. You need to fix it for all of us. And remember, there are people in this town who can't vote. They want to say too. So, I second Mr. Moore's motion that you allow people who cannot vote to at least register whether they have a vote of confidence or not. And I have one question for you, as an example of why people are so suspicious. In the voter's pamphlet, four individuals spent money to enter very cogent questions, significant questions. And not one of you, or as a body, took the time to answer not one of those questions. And so, you have to look at yourself. You set the example, and you failed, not Gerhart. Thank you.
Chris, Chris Carey, he's who? Oh? Yeah, I think so. Shannon McHale?
Well, yes, I'm changing my last name to that.
Got it?
I'm going to stand up in here so I can see people. And also, there's people out.
Right.
Hello, everyone. Shannon McHale Smith. Smith will go away soon. Old family name. Always wanted to change. 774 Pacific Way. And I think that's my reference, right? Okay. I'm going to start with a fun thing first, because that's always good. There are many in Gerhart that we loved, have a historic walking map. I'm great friends with Bob McEwen. I know there's great historians here. It's a fabulous, most interesting town. When I go out with Bob on our donkey cart rides, he's going to be actually 100 years old come this November. He will tell me about this house, or that thing, or that meadow over there, things I've never heard of. And I'm like, Bob, it's not written in the Gerhart books. It's wrong. And for example, one thing he recently showed me was Gerhart was almost named McEwenville because of a sale his back ancestors made then to Mr. Gerhart. I said, Bob, dang it. Anyway, there's little things like that that we've talked about. Anyway, when we were last at the Gerhart's homeowners, there were several folks there also that noticed that they would like to give their contribution, too, for the different things they know about the community. So, I'm offering up to folks here if they'd like to contribute to that. They're going to do a big map and get people's input and thoughts about what are great things to tell, maybe folks that both know the town, they think. And also for outsiders and visitors to learn more about our unit. Those know the town, they think, and also for outsiders and visitors to learn more about our unique history and what is so interesting about our town. So just tossing that out, we can figure out a way to get to meet or get to see people.
I think the Parks Plan has a.
Some of it?
Has a, it has an. A map was one of, one of the ideas that came out of the Parks Plan, kind of related to where the parks are.
Great. Well, we're thinking about something that could be digital, that could actually, people could follow on their phones. Or it would be something as a, a fold out, um, map they could take around town. Just, um, that is an opening. Not to confuse the subject or add more to it. Cause I wasn't at last night's meeting or discussion, I've, I've of course. muted some of the talk around town. But what occurred to me both over the last few months was if this, whatever way it voted, they went, no. To kind of start over, have a do-over as they say. A lot of people have feedback here about their disappointment for this or that. I know everyone here worked really hard at various aspects that they thought. Would be important or would be the requirement. Feedback is tough, but you have a community here that's really excited to offer it. Um, it sounds like some of the things of a mechanism. Or some of the ways that people. Did not get listened to. Something I looked back on, I thought about since the Gerhardt homeowners was, um, and I think I mentioned this at a council meeting a few years ago. Was, for example, town like McCall Idaho, bigger than us, but also somewhat. Seasonal, somewhat full-time, part-time. They were planning big things for their city. Things that were with their comprehensive plan, et cetera. What they actually did was they backed up and said, wait a minute. We need a town vision. A town vision is different than a comprehensive plan. And they actually went back to building. What, what they ended up saying was a hundred year vision for McCall Idaho. And it was a long process, but it didn't, people were really excited about it. And they had tons of engagement from their citizenry. Um, I can give the council some information, but what was the difference between work that was already done for them as far as what they're looking like? And what a vision entailed. School kids got involved. Folks part-time, full-time, visitors got involved and it set the future for that town for the next few times. In that then, planning happened, including in the vision for fire, city, you know, city buildings, parks, et cetera. And so I'm just offering that as a different kind of take on it would be a way to set a new foundation to end in context. For what we may be again hoping for is a better, um, facility for our fire and our city and our administration in the future. So we have been to spend some more things away, thank you, thank you.
Chad has anybody emailed?
Check three down there. No ma'am.
Christie, does anyone have their hand up on Zoom?
They do not.
Does anyone else in the audience want to speak? All right, thank you all very much, enlightening. We have no old business, we're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first one is resolution. Do we want to take a five-minute break? Anybody? I'm ready to go. Okay, resolution nine, six, nine, a resolution granting budget appropriation transfers. Justine, do you want to just briefly walk us through this and why we're doing it?
Sure, so you put your budget together and a budget is just an estimate, so things don't always come out exactly as you'd planned. So, um, we do the budget in, in May and approved in June. And now it's, we're looking back at this budget and we're looking at line items and, um. Things that may be over because what the budget does is you set an appropriation. So you say this line item is going to be this much money. And so if you go over, um, the, the line item, how you appropriated. You need to come before the public and let them know where you want to move funds. You can move a certain amount of funds, uh, without having to do a supplemental budget. And so these are within the limits, um, of that. So we can just move funds around in order to balance where we think we're going to be over. The reason why we're going to be over in these particular areas is, uh, due to more accurate distribution calculation in the city's annual insurance premium. So the way the premium was distributed out, um, is different. We did it different this year, which made those, that, that line item over in the general fund. Compensation for a newly created staffing position in the building department, we added this position late when we did the budgeting process. We appropriated one dollar, so we had a marker in the budget, but we didn't have salary put in there, um, for the full amount. So we hired that person in November, so they need funds put in there, um, to cover that. The conflagration in the fire department, uh, in the past, we continue to maybe under budget for what the conflag is. You never know what conflag is, that's a mobilization so that people can go to help, our firefighters can go help assist other. Areas in fighting fires, it, it is reimbursed one hundred percent by the state. Through their, their program of conflagration, they have a chart of how much those people are reimbursed and how much the city is reimbursed for equipment. The fire chief keeps track of all the people that go, but, uh, if there are bad years, we could send a lot more money in there. We have significantly increased it in the budget, um, because you put the revenue in and you put the expenditure in and in theory. They all cancel each other out because it's a reimbursement program, but we did not, we got the revenue this year, but we didn't have enough in expenditure. So that's, that's one of the reasons. And an adjustment in public works waiver salary distribution in the Parks Department and the Water Fund. So distributing, um, we have three public works workers. And those three public work workers, we have this year consistently divided out between three departments. And the budgeting was just a little bit off on dividing those out, so it's just an adjustment on those salary line items.
Okay, thank you, and Chad, do we need to read the entire resolution?
Uh, not necessary, no ma'am, it would just be a vote of the council president.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution granting the budget appropriation transfers as documented in resolution nine, six, nine and explained by the city treasurer?
I move that we adopt resolution number nine, six, nine, adjusting the city budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions in the council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion passed. I'm going to move on next to a public hearing, uh, for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Possible uses of state revenue sharing funds. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter at this time? Does any counselor believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
No.
Am I allowed to vote even, so this is a state revenue sharing funds with, okay, then I have no conflict of interest.
So at the budget committee, we discussed that you are volunteer.
Yes.
But you have no financial gain from the food bank.
Yes.
That you volunteer at and you can vote. Staff report. For. The public hearing on resolution nine seventy?
Uh, no, not much to report, other than the funds coming in have been allocated by the budget committee and, uh, the city council during that. And then this would just be approving those, these items are in the budget under the state's. State revenue sharing. And it's its own fund, so it's a separate resolution.
Do we have any additional correspondence? On this matter? There's many in the packet. Are there any proponents that need to make? Presentations at this time? We did get presentations at the budget committee. There is no others. Are there any presentations by opponents? Not hearing any. We're going to close the public hearing. Does counsel need to deliberate on the passage of resolution nine seventy, which is a resolution stating that the city of Gerhardt hereby elects to receive state revenues?
Do we need to make the motion?
I think we do.
Then I move that we accept that, uh, the receipt of the state revenues as described in resolution nine, seven, zero.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments by the council? I do have one comment, I just want to be sure that this, what we're passing right now. Is allocating to the nonprofits that we had in our budget process.
This is allocating to the state of Oregon that you acknowledge the requirements that the state revenue share program offers in order for them. Do you qualify to be part of that program? You have to follow the guidelines that they set by establishing how you're going to spend that money. And so the budgeting process is how you have decided to, to do grants and how you spend that money. So this is for next year appropriating that, yes, we agree that we will follow the state revenue sharing. Yes, we want to participate and we want to be part of the distribution of that appropriate.
Madam Mayor, um, i- if I might, some of the state shared funds, which are given to cities on a per capita basis. So it's based on, the, the amounts usually around ninety-two dollars a person or something like that, I'm not sure what it would be this year. Because I don't know what the gas tax numbers are going to look like as compared to historic. But some of those funds such as gas tax numbers are, amounts are restricted by the Oregon constitution. So they can only be utilized in certain ways, so such as. Surface paving or, or sidewalks or things, things such as that. And so this is this acknowledgement that in other funds aren't, don't have any restrictions on them. Such as the, uh, amount of money that we get for, from the liquor sales. Alcohol sales probably is a better way of terming that. Anyway, so this is just saying that to the extent that funds are restricted, we will only spend them on the items that they are allowed to be spent on.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of Peter, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is this going to be corrected to our, um, current population or is it going to still remain with the?
It is, so they, the state, um, the state recognizes Portland state's numbers as the official numbers. But my understanding is that they corrected the numbers based on the twenty twenty census. So the number, the, the twenty twenty number would have been corrected. They not necessarily changed their projections going forward and that's what I spoke about earlier. As far as their population estimates, but we should be pretty close to our actual population, um, this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? That resolution carries. Next one is a public hearing for. Part of the. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, city of Gerhardt budget. Uh, this is a public hearing for resolution nine, seven, one, a resolution adopting the city of Gerhardt budget for twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations for the city of Gerhardt. Two options will be presented. So opening the public hearing for the city of Gerhardt budget. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter at this time? Does any counselor believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
No.
Scott, do you want to explain the two budget options?
Yeah, so we had caught, when I was putting together the budget, I had contacted the finance, um, department down at the, uh, state of Oregon. About the best way to move forward with a, a ballot measure that had not passed yet. So their recommendation is, is there are certain guidelines that allow. The ability for the budget committee, especially with the May election, to approve, to put in the budget and approve appropriations. For debt service, because we would have to pay back, um, any. Measure that was passed and then to be able to create a fund where you could spend out the revenue and, um. So collect the revenue and spend out the expenditures. So when we put the budget together, we put everything together as if the measure was going to pass. We did put in the budget message that it was the taxpayer's decision whether that would pass or not. And we put, um, in the debt service and in the fire police bond new fund. That those were funds appropriated. Upon the taxpayers passing. So the two options, we have to appropriate our budget, which means we have to lay out, uh, based where we're going to spend it and how we're going to spend it. And then. That's the budget committee, then the. Counsel gets to adopt the budget. So the measure failed, so there's two options that the council has. They can progress forward and, um. You would need to reduce the debt service because there will be no payment next year. We have to impose taxes by June thirtieth, so there would be no way to impose any way to pay a debt service payment since it did not pass. So we would want to make sure that the debt service was reduced for sure. But the fire police fund that we added could be left in. To allow for if the possibility, if another measure was to pass in November or May. We could, the city could then spend, uh, money out of that fund because it had been appropriated. Option one says, no, we remove debt service, we remove the fire geo bond fund. Option two says we remove debt service and we leave the fire police bond, knowing that it didn't pass. knowing that it didn't pass, but perhaps we may go in November or May and we may have revenue that expenditure. So the two options. Is just how the council wants to move forward since the measure did not pass.
Justine, if we pass measure two, it doesn't mean that we have to go with the full twelve million. It's just, it leaves the line item open for whatever it may be.
Correct. And if you can too, under option one, you can always do a supplemental budget. It's a longer process, so that if it passes in November, you, you can do option one. You would have to do a more lengthy legal budgeting process through supplemental budgets, having some budget hearings, some. You know. Community involvement type of meetings. But it's not impossible to add supplemental budgets after. So option one doesn't say you still can't go out in November or May. It just means that you would have to do more meetings and more public hearings in order to implement those so that the public was aware. So it's just a matter of how you want to approach it, whether you want to approach it by saying, didn't pass, we're taking it out? Or. We're leaving it in because it may, we may go again.
My, my thought is, I would like to leave it out. I think trying to go for another vote. In November is too soon. I think this community needs time to heal and regroup. Rather than for, I think a vote in November would be too soon, it would seem forced. That's just my thought.
It would also be for May.
Oh, next May, still, that's right, I still think it's too soon, I do. You can disagree, just, just my thought.
I, I agree with Rita. I agree with Rita, and if we were to wait until the following May for a vote, then. We're almost into the next budget year anyhow. So it would only be a couple of months lag time. So I think option one. Makes the most sense. Makes them greater sense, more sense.
Well, then I move we accept the first option.
I second it.
Getting confused, are we still in a public hearing?
Yes, you still need to have your public hearing.
I'm sorry. Oh, I take it.
Okay, so we just got the staff in for. We have no additional correspondence. Are the presentations by proponents? Are the presentations by opponents? Okay. Going to close the public hearing. Now council may deliberate.
I deliberate.
Yeah. Is, are there any, I would rather just have a motion and then we can have any other questions or discussion.
I move that we go with the first option. Option one.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Are there any questions or other discussion items by the council? I, I just would say, you know, if, if we were to. Go for a bond measure. Having a public involvement in the lengthy budget process, you know, would be something we would do with our eyes wide open. And why wouldn't we want to do that? So. That's my only comment. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to. Nine seven two. Now open the public hearing. And this is. Adopting the budget of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations for the City of Gerhart Road District. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the City Council to hear this matter at this time? Do you? Sorry. Does any counselor believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
No conflict.
Staff report.
So the Road District within the city limits of Gerhart, same taxing district. There is a Gerhart Road District. It actually has its own taxing, permanent tax rate. And so part of the process, because it has its own tax permanent rate, is that you have to also have a public hearing for that particular tax base. You can have it included in your budget, but it does have to have all the similar notices independent of the regular City of Gerhart budget. We do make our Budget Committee also Gerhart Road District members, so the committee does include that inclusively. This is just, again, appropriating that money and imposing the tax. The permanent tax rate, I did do a public records request just because I was curious, which still hasn't been granted. As far as I know, the road tax has been in place as long as the City of Gerhart has had a permanent tax district.
Is there any additional correspondence? See any here? Are there any additional presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? And we'll close the public hearing. Council, would someone like to make a motion? For approval of Resolution nine seven two.
I'll move to approve Resolution nine seven two.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Last one. Resolution nine seven three. There is no public hearing for this one. This is a resolution fixing compensation of the following officers for the City of Gerhart. City Attorney. Police Chief, Fire Chief, City Administrator, Treasurer and Judge, and repealing all prior ordinances and/or resolutions fixing compensation of these officers of the City of Gerhart. There a motion to approve Resolution nine seven three as submitted?
I move that we approve Resolution nine seven three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions by the council?
These are the numbers that we approved of the budget.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, political sign ordinance. I had asked after the election that we have, that the council gives some direction with regard to the need for political sign ordinance. As you can probably recall, there was quite a lot of dust up about the signs that were put up around town. We have no political sign ordinance, and so just some feedback in whether or not folks think that we should probably move forward at this time. You know, my goal would be to have something in place if I go. November election or the, being recalled in July, we might want to do it sooner.
Madam Mayor, could I just briefly?
Go ahead.
So. Political signs receive special protection. And that is a, that is a. The case was, the case was written by former. U.S. Supreme Court Justice Stevens. Basically recognizing that there is no more effective way of, of reaching a large number of people at a low cost than political signs. And so in that opinion. He does say that there might be some reasonable regulations that could occur for temporary political signs. He doesn't say what those might be. If you've driven on highways and freeways in Oregon, you know that there's a prohibition on new billboards and advertising. But you know, if you're on that same highway, the month before an election, you see a ton of political signs. And, and that's the reason that, that ODOT has determined that there, they don't regulate that unless it's creating health and safety issues. So for instance, if you put a sign so that, on a corner, so that people couldn't see a cross street or something like that, it could cause an accident, then asking the property owner to move that sign to a place that didn't create that sort of issue is probably a reasonable approach that could work. My belief has always been. That the legal risk of trying to regulate it is substantially more than, than the legal risk of, of not, you know, regulating temporary political signs. In the past, there was never really an issue. And I don't think that people were upset about the signs. So I had never really given it much thought. Apparently a prior city attorney, maybe we don't know. Took a different view than, than I did because I wasn't your city attorney until after that election. But, but I can't speak to what that person decided or why. And I would also point out that Oregon's free speech laws are substantially broader than the United States First Amendment. I mean, we protect the. They use what's called the framers intent, and our framers were very open minded as far as. Protected speech. So, so saith Oregon Supreme Court Justice Hans Lindy, who authored a lot of those, of those opinions. So I think that there's even more risk. In Oregon than there might be in other states that have less robust free speech rules. With that said, if you want me to try and draft something, I will. You know, it's just, it's, it's not going to be easy.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Peter, having said all that. Is it going to cause us a lot of trouble if we denote that no signs can be nailed to city trees?
I mean, that seems like a reasonable restriction to me.
I would like to revisit this sign ordinance and just. Let's get that included somehow in our. Ordinances, because I think it's ridiculous to have people nailing signs wherever they feel like it. I mean, I don't mind signs in the ground, I really don't. I, I believe. Whatever you want to put on a sign and put it in your front yard is a very good way to. Communicate with everybody, but just tacking it on a tree. Is, is tacky for me.
Yeah, and you know, I was able to demonstrate my viewpoint neutrality this, this election after, after being accused of being in the bag for one side early on. I think that based on the number of signs that I heard about from people that visited Gerhart, that there was robust signage. And again, I mean, you know. But yes, that, that seemed like a very reasonable restriction to prohibit them on, frankly, on city property, but particularly on city trees, because that could negatively impact the health of those trees.
Right, thank you very much, Peter, for that.
Well, I think it's worthwhile also maybe doing some restriction in the C one zone. I mean, I think that was one really big. Concern.
We'll have to come up with some options. Property owners are property owners, and they feel like their free speech is just as valuable as anybody else, whether or not it's vacated, it is occupied or what have you. But because again, we didn't have any targeted ordinance, we took the safe approach and just allowed all the different signs around. I think they equally created some issues. But some of the things is whether or not we're going to allow them on rideaways, whether or not we're going to have a process that city staff and the circumstances, if a sign is dangerous to pedestrians or vehicles, whether or not those can be removed. And just some simple questions, and maybe starting. With something very simple first, and then moving on depending on how that works.
Do we have consensus to have them do something then? And Peter, we do have warrant ins, I don't know if you got a copy of it, but we do have warrant and sign ordinance.
I'll be very interested to see that.
Page is long.
I bet it is.
Yeah, two pages and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
So you're asking Peter to draft unordnance?
Well, he volunteered.
So would this be just for all signs or just for political signs?
This is just for temporary political signs because they actually have a special designation. If these were commercial signs, there's no question about whether we could regulate them or not, we could.
And that's all in our zone.
All right, I understand.
Yeah. Okay, we've got a consensus, so we'll move on. Yeah, last piece of business I think that we have is the new planning commission appointment. Staff, you have a report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, or Council. Commissioner David Smith informed the council's resignation from the planning commission at the May City Council meeting. Mr. Smith volunteered many years of service and will be dearly missed. There is current and well-qualified applicants remaining from recent commissioned vacancy interview opportunities. Tonight, the mayor will motion for a replacement from those previous applicants. The mayor should nominate the applicant. The City Council shall confirm the nominee by majority vote. If the City Council fails to confirm an applicant, the mayor shall nominate another applicant. The term of office for a member shall be four years with the term expiring November thirtieth, the fourth year after appointment in accordance with the position that's being filled. This being a midterm vacancy, the seat will expire on eleven thirty, twenty twenty-three. No recommendation, the legal analysis is there, the financial analysis is not applicable.
Thank you. I took very careful notes. In March, when we did a number of. We had four applicants that actually showed up that evening for their interviews. And I had a one, two, three and four rating from that evening. I did, we have already appointed the first person, Judy Schechter in March, and I spoke with John Messberg, he was the number two person that had applied and interviewed. He was still very interested in the opportunity. I think he may be on the call. There he is. And. His local address is one six six North Marion Avenue. And he has a mailing address at seven forty Heather Way, Ann Arbor, Michigan. And he is part-time here, he is retired. And I would like to recommend him for the planning commission. John Messberg. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Messberg? Is there a motion to approve Mr. Mesberg?
I move that we approve John Mesberg on, as a planning commissioner.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions of the council or Mr. Mesberg, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve if the council so approves. I do want to just add that I am moving to Oregon full-time. My wife and I are moving to Oregon full-time in April of this coming year. We've actually purchased a home in Portland, in northeast Portland. So I will be a full-time Oregon resident and a part-time Gerhardt resident. And we'll spend a lot more time in Gerhardt, of course, once we're Oregon residents as well. I will be there all summer, starting in mid-June. So I can attend planning commission meetings in person that occur during the summer months. And will be frequently visiting during the year as well and hope to be attending some of those meetings as well in person during the balance of the year, should I be approved this evening. Of course, I'm available for any questions, if there are any, by the council members. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to serve this, this community.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the council? Can I ask a question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, are we going to do council concerns first or are we going to just go on?
Yes, it's there. There is a line item. Carrie, do you have any concern?
I have no concerns. I want to thank the people that spoke out today at the visitor's section. I can't say I agree with everybody, but I can say that I welcome people to run for office in Gerhardt and don't let social media scare you. That's all I've got to say.
Grant? Concerns?
Nothing that I'd like to present. I do appreciate the feedback from the speakers. And have a good evening.
Read out.
Oh, I want to welcome Mr. John Mesberg to our city community. And I do again, want to thank everyone for coming. That's it.
No concerns for me. Thanks for everybody.
Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
So second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good night, everybody. Good night.